Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its public work, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming in, everybody. If we can just go around the room, maybe introduce ourselves. Debbie Deen, I guess I'll introduce the people like at this table. Jason Somro, select board member, Sean Talbot, Lou Alvarez, select board member.
Phil Thayer, logger.
Peter Forrester.
Peter Coe, Dr. Palvar.
Bob Boynton, conservation committee.
Alright, cool. Yeah, so we're all in here this evening to discuss a potential timber harvest out at the landfill property. And just sort of see what that process is. It's completely new to us at the board level. And that's why I asked, you know, so many people to come in and, you know, kind of be involved so that we made sure that we went through everything in the correct fashion and we were thinking of all aspects. So I tried to think of everybody that could be involved in this potential project. So I guess we'll start off with you, Dan. I appreciate you going in, taking a look at, taking a look at the property. Do you mind just giving a brief synopsis of what's out there to the group?
Yeah, I've been in contact with Kenny Layton, he reached out to me and I think you had reached out to me about the possibility of a timber sale there. So I really just took a fairly brief walk around, just to look at the feasibility of it. Kenny's got some pine out there that he could cut. Also, there's an esker that extends from the town property onto his property. And I only looked at the west side of the town property. I did not really look at the east side, which I think is a little wetter too. But Kenny's property would not be accessed from the east side of the town property. That's why I did not look at that. You've got a variety of soils on the town property. There are some swamps, also some sand and gravel deposits. The esker that I mentioned giving on to Kenny's, there is some timber. Off the top of my head, I think the town could realize probably in the neighborhood of $10,000 or so in income from a harvest there. May want to consider during that harvesting a lot of real low quality wood. But I think the town may want to, you know, think of, think it through thoroughly. Because if you wanted to expand any gravel operations or anything, this would probably be a good time to clear that. But if not, you know, just, just think of what your long-term goals for that property are so that we don't hinder that moving forward. You can certainly realize the income, but maybe there's some other aspects that are important to you or will be important to you at some point in time that you want to think through.
Excuse me, can you give us a little bit of background exactly where you're talking? How many acres? What is, we need a little more background on the project.
Okay. Well, so we haven't done an exact measurement. This is still in the very, you know, beginning stages of this. Dan, would you be able to estimate acreage?
On the town level, you're probably talking in the west side thirty, forty acres maybe. And that, that's a little bit of a guess. I haven't taken the time to measure it.
Okay.
I, I do have a map. I can kind of show you the general area that we're looking at. But again, it's, it's very much up to the town what they decide they want to do or what they don't want to do.
And what is the, the purpose of this?
Well, so the purpose is to realize some type of potential income. And then also, you know, for me, it would be to improve the health of the forest and potentially get trees of higher value down the line, like to mature. Because right now, from what I understand, there's a lot of overgrowth that's kind of keeping everything down. And then, you know, after Dan had walked out there, you know, he had seen those deposits of gravel and sand that could be of some value to us if we can access it in a way that doesn't, you know, destroy the landscape.
So everyone, anyone watching knows, this is at the landfill block.
Yes, yes.
This is the area, if you're facing going in the driveway to the landfill, the area to the right or to the left? To the left.
That big hill, the cap.
Can I ask a stupid question? Sorry.
It's probably not stupid. Just me asking.
What's an esker?
An esker is a sand and gravel deposit. It's usually a, when you find them, they're not overly common. But the theory behind them is back when the glaciers receded, they left these big deposits of sand and gravel versus your swamps or your other areas. And so an esker is this hogback or ridge, often very steep-sided, that will be, you know, from top to bottom, just nothing but sand and gravel.
Okay.
And there were holes in the glacier that, as the glacier retreated, that was the terrain that left behind.
They call it moraine. Right, Dan? Something called lateral moraine. Yeah, I think I've heard of it.
And how this all kind of started and why it seems so raw is about a month or maybe a little bit more ago, Mr. Lettini had called me and asked if we would be potentially interested in accessing, like, our timber. I mean, that he had land on the other side of us that he was looking to get, do a timber harvest in. And to see if we would provide him a landing. And while he's in there, we might look at, you know, accessing our timber as well. On top of getting some type of fee for providing the landing to him. And then that's, like, this, it's all kind of snowballed into pulling in all the different people, you know, Mr. Thayer and Mr. Reed. And then, you know, then including, you know, Bob, yourself and Peter, and then Dee from the planning board as well. Just to make sure that all interests are realized and that we don't overlook anything.
Does this land about the road at all? Or is it deeper in?
I'm not sure exactly.
There's road frontage on 124, and the counties also have frontage on 123.
Most of it's not of the existing landfill, right?
Kenny's piece is north of the existing landfill, yes.
So it, it hits 123 and 124?
Yeah, the entire town track does.
I know, that's why I was asking which side of the, you know.
When you, when you drive into the transfer station, the area we're talking about is to the left, to the left of that hump where the, you know, the old landfill is and to the left of the entrance. And it does have some frontage there. The timber area, you know, starts over at 124, right at the driveway. As you go in, wraps around that exposed landfill and then proceeds further northwest.
All the way up to 123?
Uh, no, it's, the property's pretty much divided by the landfill. So there's two separate wooded areas, one on the east over to 123 and one on the west, up to the Sharon line.
Okay.
And Kenny's land is in Sharon. You're in New Ipswich, which should go to the Sharon line.
So goes right up to the Sharon line?
And because of the brook on the north side that flows through Kenny's piece, he can't access it from the Sharon side.
Got it.
That's why he's stuck coming this way. And so that's why he's made the proposals.
Okay. Thank you. The history kind of helps to find where it is.
Yeah.
I have the map pulled up here if anyone wants to look.
It's that triangle, well.
I know it's a tri, yeah, I know, I know the piece of property. I'm just trying to figure out where on the piece of property.
Now, Bob, is there anything that we should be concerned, like, concerned with conservation-wise out there?
Well, the area is very wet out there for sure. You should have seen. That's, that's the primary concern we have.
It varies from very wet to very dry. With your sand and gravel deposits are very dry and you have standing water in areas and areas are so saturated, there's really no trees. Those areas, there's no trees. There's, we're, we have no reason to go there. So we're really not going to, and we would not impact the wetland areas.
And what is the value added to the town? I mean, $10,000 doesn't seem like that's incentive to destroy the woodland area as it is. And, you know, as a source of revenue, you can't do this repeatedly for the next, what, twenty or however many years? So what is the value added to the town to do a timber harvest?
Well, I don't think they're trying to do, like, clear-cut it. They're selective cutting, correct?
It, it's, it's more complicated than that. But yeah, the, I would hope for the town's sake that we hope to improve it so that you grow more timber faster for the future. And at the same time.
We're not in the timbering business, so why would we want that?
You are whether you want to be or not because you have land that grows timber. And it's a matter of you kind of use that to its best or if you're just gonna let it do its own thing.
Right. It's, it's a resource. And that, that value of that tim, that timber will grow a lot faster after the initial harvest. So you look at the growth rates and the trees will improve, the quality of the wood will improve. $10,000 isn't a lot of money, but nobody can take $10,000 and go.
No, but, but environmentally, what are we doing to, what are we doing to all the critters and everything else that are in there?
We're, we're going to improve it.
Conservationally?
Yeah. Oh, I understand what you're, what you're thinking about. It's a resource. And it's a resource that's very valuable to the state economy. Not only to, you know, loggers and sawmills, but end users, consumers. Everybody uses wood. Wood is society. And it has to come from somewhere.
But my point is, the town's not in the business of timber, you know, so.
But Becky, if you own timber, you're in the timber business.
Yeah, well.
I think the whole purpose of hiring a forester is to improve the health of the forest. The critters, I think, will be fine. And
Well, I mean, that's just one aspect. Now, this is one example of, you know.
And so then I think there's another aspect of managing our lands. Since the town owns it, that would be considered a responsible management of your land to not only tap into any resource that might be there, but also to maintain it in its best health. That's how I kind of see it. Because it's town land, it might actually end up being walkable. People could take walks through the woods. I don't know. Just what comes to my head and I haven't been in.
Both sides.
Yeah, I haven't been involved in this discussion until ten minutes ago. So I'm just as new at it as you.
Yeah, I think you're right on that, Jason. We did, we did a job last winter down in Groton House. It's known as a Sabine Forest. It's one of the most hiked areas in, in Groton. And, I mean, it, it was heavy with pine. And we did a harvest that was like 500,000 feet for one of the foresters that does work for Norman Forestry Foundation. And, yeah, I mean, this trail's all through that property because of logging. And, you know, when we're done, it's easily accessible by the public and they use it a lot. So you're right. I mean, it does gain access.
But I have seen logged areas that are disasters when they're finished. You know, and, and walking through all of the leftover stuff that's on the ground is disgusting and it looks hideous. That's why I was asking how, how this abuts to the road. They, they say, I don't, I don't know what you guys have some, like, fifty feet or something that all of your stuff's got to be dropped from the roadside or something like that?
Setback.
Huh? Is that?
Setback.
The setback on that?
They call, yeah, they call them BMPs.
Yeah, and, you know, I, I've been in a situation where I'm looking at this timber harvested land and it isn't pretty. And it's not anything you want to walk through because there's too much crap on the ground. So I, I, I know, I'm not trying to be a naysayer here, but I'm thinking of my experience with areas that have been selectively cut.
Right. Well, what often looks good to us doesn't look good to wildlife. There's a, there's a big difference there. And, you know, often those brush piles and all the debris and stuff is good things for, for little critters to hide. And what's nice and clean and looks good to us, there's no place to hide. But that's kind of what I want to listen to today is what does the town want to see happen with that property? Because we can make it whichever way you want it, but it's the town's decision to, to how you want this to come out.
Dee?
I think part of the challenge here is we're, we're probably talking about multiple topics without a clear idea of where we're going. So I think the logging is one piece. Recreation is part of our master plan and places to walk are highly, highly sought out by our, our, our townspeople right now. So if the purpose of this is going to be, I think you, you, you should go into this project saying, here is our purpose. If the purpose is to timber and get recreational pathways, then we should say that out front and make those plans. If we also want, we're not going to walk every, every bit of the land, so maybe some of the areas are going to be left more
Critter-friendly.
Critter-friendly.
Rustic.
Rustic, there we go. Or, or as they lay, if you would. So I think the key is that we have to say, we should be declaring our purpose as a town about how we're going to go forward and then decide where we're going to go. If that land that Kenny's going to log is going to remain recreational, then he could lay out the pathways that he'd like to see and we somehow connect them back to a public parking area. You know, that's the type of thing that people really want right now. And I'm not saying it's feasible. I'm just saying, we're talking about a whole lot of, it could be pretty. Well, what's pretty? Start with your purpose and then decide where you want to go. I, I think right now, if, if my being here is, if, if there's trails that can be integrated into this, great. But I also think that part of my thought process, I know my neighbors do a lot of stuff in the winter so that it isn't, the wetlands aren't being trampled over. But I've also seen stumps in wetlands that I don't want to see, you know. So I think we have to, again, what is it going to be done? How is it going to be done? And how do we protect the wetter areas that need to be protected?
Bob?
Sean, if one of the goals is to have trails, who would create and maintain those trails?
So the trails aspect is just coming up now. So I don't know.
It's my fault.
So I don't know that necessarily we have to have, like, created trails and we can make this as complicated or as simple as we desire for this whole thing.
But you, you know, you, you want to talk about benefits of the town. Well, the money benefit to me is miniscule. Miniscule. Okay, it's, it's nothing. But if, if, you know, you set out with a goal that we're going to do snowshoeing trails or whatever, then you start to look at it like, there's the value. That's the question I was asking. What's the value added to the town?
Are there snow club, snow machine clubs that would come in and do stuff with it? I, I don't, I'm, now I'm getting out of my purview. I'm just saying, really, I think we, we begin with the end in mind.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, now the other thing to look at is, is gravel and sand. Okay, that's a big value for the town. You know, and all of the access that you could do.
So we don't have to buy it.
You have to.
Well, that is, that is value added, but how much do we have now? I mean, like, what's our resource and, you know?
Your source now is almost gone.
And you'll know that.
Your source now is almost gone. We're right at the.
But, but again, there's value added to the town. So, you know.
You know, this, this gentleman probably knows how many probably adds material there. I haven't walked up in the woods and seen what's up to it.
If, if, if you wanted to pursue that, you probably want to see if we can get an estimate or a backlog. Do some tests and see, see what you've got. Because if the town tells you it's there, I can't tell you what quality of it.
Where we harvest the gravel now, anything below that is just soaked. So.
Yeah, I mean, I know you're in a spot, but it's like, you know, if it's a mountain and it's going to last for 150 years, we don't need to worry about it.
The unfortunate thing, they used a lot of the sand to the cat. They would have been better off to buy the materials to utilize more.
Question.
Yes.
Wasn't there some talk in the past, maybe the way past, that some of that land could be used for commercial purposes?
Yeah, that was thrown out there. Yeah.
I think there are some restrictions though because the landfill is there. I think there's a lot of restrictions surrounding land. So you'd have to check with the state, but they, they set some of the off limits because they didn't want drainage from landfill going down to factory or things like that, houses.
Dee?
Yeah, I, I think we're coming to a point where we've said we were going to do commercial stuff slow rather than fast to be sure we're doing the right thing. But one of the things I think we're going to see starting this week is that we have a, a need for commercial land that we're going to have to meet. And so I do think, you know, if we're thinking long-term, it may be, you know, depending on how fast we're talking about making this happen, there may be areas that we want to let go, let go. Log it and then let it go later on. So it is certainly something to think about. I think what's interesting is I walked in here thinking I wouldn't have a whole lot of input and yet by the same token, my head is spinning now about the whole, where are we going to go with all this property? And what's the best value the town can get out of it?
So what to do?
If, if the town needs gravel and sand, isn't one of the best places to get it right by the landfill? Like low-impact off the highway? Where else would you have access to sand and gravel? I'm just curious.
I have no idea.
Is there any other places that you know of?
Yeah, not anywhere in the town, so.
Yeah, so.
See, that was a good vein. This cross street was red and white, which had to be sand and gravel. You know, most of the stuff he uses and now he's trucking in, so.
Yeah.
It sounds to me like that's, would be one of the primary reasons to log it. Find out where to make way to access the gravel if.
Those resources, yeah.
Peter says, we're running out. It's a good, good thing for the town to have, I think.
Yeah, it's expensive to crush the gravel and, you know, to continually have to buy all the sand.
But as a side, you know, public use of town-owned lands is, in my opinion, how it should be. If it somehow improves that. I have a, is there restrictions for the landfill area? Is there like a buffer zone where people aren't supposed to?
There probably is. I'd have to look at the closure plan again.
The answer is yes, but is to the extent of it, I don't know. But it's a pretty good chunk that's been marked off limits.
And I think some of that will go into wetlands, so it'll all be kind of moved. How about the buffers on that side?
And you were talking about trails up through the, the snowmobile trail now out front. You know, they might be willing to put some trails out there and maintain them.
Yeah.
Probably no cost to the city or town, I mean.
With trails, you, you, again, you're limited by that brook on the north side. So your trails aren't going to go too far to the north. You can always do whatever you call a dog-walking path. You know, you go out a half mile, come back again. You can easily tie over to the, what's that little cluster development there to the west? If they would have an interest.
Spendleback.
Yeah, they've got their, their own area too of forest land that they can do something with if they want to.
Okay.
A lot of the land is very workable and there is the snowmobile trail going across the, the frontage of 124 now.
Yep.
So I see an, uh, printout here. I believe this was from Mr. Boynton, that we would hire a forester and come up with a plan with the forester.
Yeah, I, I think both the forester and the logging should go up to Dan.
So you're a forester?
I'm a forester, yeah.
And I'm not trying to hold you to anything, but seeing the scope of this, are we in the tens of thousands of dollars range or?
The scope of what it would cost?
What it would be, yeah, to come up with a plan and, are we?
I, that, yeah, a lot depends on exactly what you want me to do. If we're simply supervising a timber sale or we kind of just, do we need to write up some management plan or something like that beforehand? So it's a little hard to say at this point how it is. I, I, I need to have a good handle on what you want me to do before I can give you any numbers.
You'll probably be working with the other, the other property anyways, right? Because although, there's a second property, so the plan would be for both properties and a certain amount of access. Some of that's probably going to be negotiated, if there's a cost to us, right? Are you talking cost or are you talking income, Jason?
It's cost.
Talking cost.
Right. So what I'm saying is, I think we wouldn't have done this necessarily on our own.
Correct.
As the town. But because there's an other party involved. So I think you guys may wind up negotiating, getting prices and then negotiating, you know, how does it all fall out?
It's usually by percentage, right, Dan?
Yeah, there's usually a percentage.
The percentage of the forest.
I have to step back and say, okay, how much work is this going to take me to figure out what kind of percentage? When I'm throwing out this $10,000 amount, I'm, that's already figuring my fees deducted from that. So you're, you know, after it's all said and done, you would have $10,000 to put in the bank. I'm all paid off. With, with town property, the purchaser, the logger, is going to pay the timber tax.
So then I think Kenny was saying too that he would pay a percentage to the town for the use of the landing, right, Sean?
Correct.
So there's another, that, that, he said somewhere in the neighborhood of fifteen percent.
Fifteen, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's going to go a long ways towards paying for Dan's fees, you know, so.
Yeah.
I mean, not that, I know money, money's not a huge issue here. There's not a lot of money involved, but.
Well, when you factor the sand and gravel aspect in.
Yeah, I mean, if.
To get paid to access it is.
And to have access potentially for the community as well.
For a common sense kind of view of the whole thing, it all kind of makes sense, you know, to do it. If Kenny's going to be in there logging his property, you're being neighborly by letting him use the, um, the landfill and you're getting a percentage, kind of makes pretty good sense to, you know, to me.
Yeah.
It's a good time to, if you're going to access the gravel too, it's all money, you know, money in your pocket. I think if you're going to clear-cut the gravel, you may even get more money, you know, so.
Yeah.
It's a way to look at.
Yeah.
Use a resource, you know.
In ball fields for 25 years from now, it's not commercial land. Going on that master plan, man.
Can't tell you the number of shopping malls and playgrounds that are on top of old landfills in this state.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I, I mean, like you were saying, it's up to the state. There's regulations on what you can and can't build. And I don't know what the regulations are on the, um, buffer areas on the, on the boundary too.
We've got a gravel pit. If we gravel up some stuff, it could be, there's a nice space for future fields, you know?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Or commercial, whatever we.
You got to look at all aspects of what you'd end up with, yes.
Yeah.
I'm going to go get GIS Blue through a whole new line of stuff, right?
That's what I'm doing right now.
Might be the good place for the flea market, hey, you know?
Yeah.
Keep talking about a community center. There you go.
If we could, you know, access the timber, the sand and gravel, provide access to community.
It's a win-win-win.
Help out a fellow community member, like, if providing access to his other land. There's a lot of positives to this. It sounds like it could be done in, you know, a fashion that's not going to harm the critters and all that, you know, too much. And I'm sure that, you know, these guys are, you know, cognizant of, you know, the, the water, the wetlands and everything that's out there too, so that, you know, not just running roughshod over anything that they're not supposed to.
Would we have to call the DES and get some kind of wetlands crossing permit or anything? Or it depends on where you're going?
If, if we cross any wetlands, we have to have a permit to do so.
Yep. Yep.
Just get a permit. On the town end of it, uh.
That would be them, not us.
You might not even need to file one for the towns, Kenny's probably would.
The town, the towns are not exempt.
No, I mean, I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking off the top of my head, a brook crossings on the town piece, I don't know that we would need to cross a brook.
No, I don't think you would.
Kenny would. Kenny, Kenny would probably need to, um, but you probably don't need to. But we'd we'd figure that out when the, when the town came, that costs twenty-five dollars to fill a big one.
Right.
We'd have to do our own excavation permit, but again, it would just depend on how we.
Yep. All right, yeah, the, you know, we kind of fulfilled the purpose of getting everybody into the same room tonight to bring up all these different, you know, points and aspects. And give us some things to look at, that piece of property in order to better understand it ourselves. And, you know, get this going and, you know, come up with what the best, you know, plan of use, like future use of the property is. So I'll work on, when I say hi. We'll work on uh, getting uh, you know, some maps out uh, to everyone. And to see if you could, you know, kinda make notes on each, you know, like point and aspect out there. We'll have to take a walk out, um, well, would it be difficult to get a machine up there to just start doing a little bit of, you know? Fingering around or?
Would be right now.
Yeah, but.
Take a snow, we'll be allowed.
He wants to drill.
Way here further, I know.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
This year would be a good time.
Can we get a summary of the landfill and what requirements and restrictions it's under now and maybe in ten years? Just so we can start thinking about that space. I, my brain says, oh, we can't do anything with it, but like I said, there's a whole lot of stuff that's been built on playgrounds. Um, I mean, on dumps around the state, not necessarily that I'm saying put a playground over the dump, but, you know, is, if that can be built up, huh? It's like, God forbid that. No, no, well, it's been done in more places, there shouldn't have been done, but I'm actually thinking more like can, could, eventually, could there be commercial property? Over where the dump is, or a parking area with buildings around it, like, I'm really starting to look at the, the, the resource of, of the eventual dump land. I don't know what modern day dump restrictions are.
So I spoke with the D E S.
Yeah.
I had a resident ask if they could use that capped area as a runway for R C planes. And they pretty much said, it's yours, just remember it's subject to testing. And then, you know, when we talked with Peter, he's like, well, yeah, you'd have to be careful. But it sounded to me like you have to file to the state that you're gonna use it for another purpose. And the reason this, this person asked me if they could use it is because he's flown on capped landfills throughout the state. So a lot of towns have done it, so.
Yeah, flying planes is one thing, because it probably doesn't impact people's health. But what's coming out of that landfill is probably not pretty. And it's down gradient as you're going towards Kenny's property and it flows out to the backland. A lot of that land is off limits, as I said before, so you'd have to check with D E S to find out if you can put structures out there.
Yeah, that is, that's a different topic, I'll forget.
Yeah, I think originally the planning board was considering that location for solar, but we're not, we're, we're years, years and years away from. Any potential there right this second.
That's too bad.
Yeah, yeah, it's infrastructure issues that we just don't have.
Yeah, we don't have three-phase power up there.
All right, yeah, so let's, you know, do a little bit more, um, you know, investigative work and come up with a plan, you know? Um, so we can start, uh, put these out, little request for bid out. Yeah, so I guess, do we, we should probably do the R F P for a forester, do you guys agree with that?
Can you do that until you have your purpose identified?
You get a status notice.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, I, I think he's right though.
Yeah.
He's right, you need that purpose.
If you don't have the purpose, you don't know what the R F P says.
Well, so in developing the R F P, we develop a purpose, right?
Yeah.
One more thing.
Involved in that then.
And you gotta decide it's something you definitely wanna do.
Yeah, well.
Cause you're, you're, you're.
At this point, you consider a done deal to move ahead, just how you're gonna do it?
Not how, like what not, what the specific purpose is gonna be, um, but, um. You know, I'd like to see us start to move forward, uh, to see if it is, you know, viable and something, you know, that, you know, we could realize a lot of these benefits. Out of, um, so it sounded as though Jason sees value in it. Lou, do you see value in?
I don't know, I, I'm with Dean on this one, I think that a purpose has gotta come out first.
No, it's, I mean, moving forward and developing a purpose.
Okay, I would go along with that.
Yeah.
So the question is, what is your purp-, what is your purpose? Is your purpose to get the gravel out of there? To do that, to find that out, you're gonna go out there and scratch around and dig and see what you got. So that would be step number one, that's why I think we're trying to establish, yeah, what's step number one? That way there, if you know you have gravel there and you wanna harvest the gravel, then you can tell the forester what you're doing. And then he can make his plan accordingly.
Okay.
So you gotta go with step number one is to find out what you have for gravel out there.
Yeah.
And then, and then, you know, if the town, the town needs gravel, so that I'm, that's, that's obvious.
There's people, you know, digging, like there are even people digging last week, so I don't think the ground's so frozen.
Ground's not frozen, it's just, I don't have a piece of equipment on hand to call and do that, I'll have to rent one.
Kenny, Kenny probably does, doesn't he rent out excavators? Talk to Kenny, if he wants to use access to the property for a landing, ask him if he's got a little mini he can run out there and scratch around with.
Yeah, that's a good point.
He, he might be interested in testing his own.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sean, I, I agree with Phil that the purpose of it is to harvest, eventually to harvest the gravel. But I don't think you have to plan ahead twenty-five years, it's how you're gonna use the land to do timber house, I think that's overkill.
No, I know, but just like some aspects of it, like, so the immediate aspects, why I started with Peter, like, asking a few minutes ago about. How easily it would be to get it, a piece of machinery out there and check it out, like, scratch around. And then, I agree, but we can still think forward of what the goal would be in the next year or two of providing access to the community. Cause that wasn't an, an aspect that I was necessarily, necessarily thinking about, um, you know, walking into this meeting. So, and once Becky brought up how sometimes it just looks like a mess, and now I understand that we can ask for it to look different ways. You know, like to have the brush piled, um, maybe in certain areas and manage the area, like come up with a full plan.
Or you could have it chipped.
You could just have it chipped and sold to our company.
And if, if you wanna clear an area for gravel, first we need to know that that's the area that you wanna clear, how big of an area. And if we just do a timber sale, then you decide to clear it, well, you probably make money in the timber sale, but now you gotta pay somebody to come in and clear your gravel site. Or we could've, you could've gotten paid to clear it the first time around.
Yeah.
If we, if we knew that in advance.
Yeah.
Or, you know, if we clear all the gravel and then you don't access it for ten, fifteen years, now you gotta go, well, we clear that. Where we could've just left the timber on it for now. So you know, you might, you might put all those pieces together before we move forward.
Okay.
What happens if there's no gravel out there, if there's no good gravel out there?
We lose a big motivator.
And the answer is what?
We lose a big motivator.
I would say yes.
Yeah, yeah.
So we should be prepared for that too.
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, we don't know until we do the test bits.
All right.
And I think I'd like to open a discussion with the planning board, um, over the next month or so. We've got a pretty full schedule right now, but, and, and have this discussion a little bit more to see if there's any recommendations we can make looking at it. Like I said, I think the commercial stuff is gonna come up hard and fast this spring and summer and then. I don't believe we have commercial zoning in this town, hence. We've been discussing it now on and off for two, three years and, and.
Closer to five.
Longer than that.
Closer to five.
No, I mean, again, recently, but again, recent, again, recently it's come up.
Yeah, the only trouble about commercial, I'm telling you, is still not three-phase power.
Right, and we don't have town sewer, town water.
Well, if you're gonna go with commercial, three, you know, the power company would put three-phase power.
Well, they're not gonna do it on their own.
No.
Whoever's building it.
Whoever's building it.
It's not gonna, if you're running from Davis Village out that way, that's two or three miles.
Yep.
Talking millions of bucks.
Yeah, not a, yeah, not as well.
Yeah, no, I think we got an estimate a couple of years ago, a couple million dollars in order to run it out there, yeah.
For solar.
It used to be a million, who knows what it is.
Yeah, true.
All right, yeah, so we'll do that, like our, you know, initial work and we'll start, you know, working out the details for, um, you know? What the proposed purpose will be, we'll have to check out those sand and gravel deposits and, uh, go from there. And hopefully we can get this, you know, moving right along and, um, not let this sit and fall, you know, back on our, um, to-do list.
Kicking from, kicking the cans down the road.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to see this project move forward.
Yeah.
If it's feasible.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
How did, how did, so for people like all of us, I guess, that we don't know what our options are and what? How do, how do we know like what we would wanna do, or what we wouldn't wanna do, or what the options are to us?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna pester you with questions to figure it out.
Okay, good, I like that. Yeah, cause like we don't know, you know, I mean, we might have an idea.
Field of expertise, that's what I do it.
Okay.
So.
All right.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah, like, you know, if you don't have gravel out there, then do you really wanna do it, you know? I mean, it's still ten thousand dollars.
Right.
Still get it, you know, maybe some trails out of it or whatever, but.
Yeah.
Maybe it isn't worth it to you, you know, maybe it's.
But doesn't that, doesn't like selective cutting, doesn't that keep the forest healthier and that kinda stuff?
Oh, yeah, yeah, and all that.
Wise and everything, for the critters and, and the trees and the.
Yeah, there, it's, there's many facets to that, but, you know, when you say selective cutting, what did you select?
Yeah.
But if you're, if you're keeping your best healthy, younger trees and getting rid of your low quality, non-productive, slow-growing trees. Um, and allowing areas to regenerate, yeah, you're, you're going a long ways in that direction.
Cause like state forest, I mean, you've said the Plaisengraten and whatever, I mean, state forests do that all the time. They do selective harvesting or whatever, just to keep it healthier and, from what I understand.
And that, all that debris on the ground is, um, you know, that's big, called that fiber retention. So it stabilizes the soil, it looks, it looks awful, I, you know, I know what you're saying.
Initially.
Yeah, it looks awful, um, but seeds get in there, you know, and it has potassium and nitrogen. It creates a seed bed, and five years down the road, you're like, whoa.
Longer than five years.
Okay, what we got going on in here?
Trust me, longer than five years.
Well, I, I don't.
I understand it can be very healthy for the forest, I'm not saying that it's not good for the forest.
You look at the back.
I'm saying that there are other factors to consider, so don't consider that I'm, I, I may say, I haven't said that.
No, I'm not.
I'm just raising questions.
Becky, I know, I know what you're talking about, anybody who's gone in the woods has seen disaster.
Yes.
Areas of where loggers just.
That's cause they just didn't clean up after themselves.
Yeah.
Not necessarily, then they're.
Loggers don't necessarily clean that up, it's not, when you're logging, you're not landscaping.
Well, that's true.
You're not, it's, it's not part of your job to clean up.
It's the landowners.
No, it's, you leave it there, it's good for, you know, the brush is good for the soil.
It's compost, it's, um.
Habitat in a shot run?
Yeah, yeah, it's, yeah, it's, there's all kinds of little niches in it where things can, can thrive. Um, and it also prevents some wildlife, like deer, often a problem where they browse so much, it's just hard to regenerate oak. But if there's a lot of brush left on the ground, it's miserable for me to walk through, it's miserable for the deer to walk through, and you can get some of that better regeneration back.
So I wanna bring up a place that we did that, which is, everybody knows, right in back of the Barrett Mansion after the ice storm. There was so much damage to the forest out there, that, um, uh, Historic New England contracted. Dan to, um, you know, do a harvest out there to clean it up and pretty much we cut, you know, did a clear cut out there. And what, that, that must've been around two thousand and ten, cause the ice storm was in two thousand and eight. So we're twelve years into it now, and that is so thick in there, it's gotta be fifteen, twenty feet tall. And the deer and stuff in there is, it's incredible how much, you know, bird life and deer and all of that is, you know, is in that. In that clear cut area, yeah. I did a, I did a job for the state of Mass one time where we just clear cut fifteen acres and left. You think brush on the ground is unsightly, we, we cut the trees down and just left them there. I mean, thirty-inch trees.
Cause that's what they wanted?
That's what they wanted for bird habitat.
Oh.
Yeah.
You, usually, you know, like Phil's crew and most other crews, we require they lock it all down, so at least you can step over it. But for the wildlife value, you, sometimes we want it left up, now it's really difficult to walk through.
Right.
Very unsightly, but the wildlife don't think so.
The state of Pennsylvania, when they, when they log, they cut the heads off the trees, the branches are fifteen feet up in the air. To stop the deer from browsing in on the new growth.
Ah.
So I, I mean, you can't even walk through that.
Yeah.
When they're done harvesting, so.
There's different degrees to it.
Yeah, that's my point, Becky, yeah.
I, I understand that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
See, who knew, we all got educated today.
But the next question is, when was the last time you were walking around out behind the landfill? So does that aspect really come into play, you know?
Not too many people wanna play in Chernobyl.
Right.
Well, does it, does it, is there a smell out there? I've never noticed one.
No.
But at this point, we're getting to the end, I thought of like the landfill period type of thing and I.
Only have two more payments on the loan, so two more years.
And that's why, I mean, it, the complaints that we get about, I get right off the road trying to walk in this town, I mean, you know? So I, I do think, you know, there's some potential value, we can make all of this work together at, at one, at one time. It could be really cool. Or it could be really beneficial to sell off some of the land and let people do commercials.
How, Bob, how, how, on your, um, conservation properties, huh, you have a lot of trails.
Oh, you do.
What, what would you say the degree of people using them is, is it used heavy, light?
Well, I don't, I don't know which would use for a criteria to determine, I mean, percentage, number of people annually and so on, so.
Yeah, people using them and, and are the trails maintained is my question.
The tails are maintained, but it's pretty difficult with only a small crew, and that's why I asked Sean, who would create and maintain trails up here? The Swetman?
Well, like, you can't walk. Recreation Marvin? Yeah, that's a good point, yeah. I mean, I can't, I can't find out how to walk a real pool trail right now, I mean, I can get in about, you know, a quarter of a mile and then I can't figure out where to go. I'm not the best trail walker in the whole world, but.
You go off the river roadside?
Yeah.
You can go off either both ends, I just can't figure out.
River roadside is a lot easier to figure out where the road is.
No, I went from the other end.
Yeah, going from the other end is difficult to find.
But if I go from River Road, maybe I can find my way?
Yeah, I think you would, cause it's got the old ten rod stone wall, you know, whatever, for quite, it's a neat hike.
That's like exercise. Those of you who know me think that's funny.
All right, yeah, so I guess, you know? You know, I'll keep working with you all, like offline, you know, and bring stuff back to the board periodically to get like a scope and a purpose going. And hopefully, you know, have another meeting within the next, you know, a few weeks, uh, with that determined.
Sure.
It's not fair.
Have Saturday work session at seven A M.
Those are my favorite ones.
Uh, no.
If we get started at six, it'd be better.
Saturday at four would be better.
Yeah.
If you do test bits, I'd like to tag along.
Okay, alright.
Just to make sure you get it worked, I think you got it.
Yeah.
Launch the show.
And that is appreciated.
Yeah.
By the board.
Definitely.
Cool, thank you so much for coming in and educating us.
Yeah.
And giving us a direction.
Very interesting.
I learned a lot. Thank you.
No, we're going on to a couple old new business things, but then gonna be wrapping up shortly.
I watched the video.
There you go, Bob.
Thanks for stopping by.
Get off the live camera.
Alright. Cool, thanks for coming in, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Way to work.
Great.
I know, right?
No, that was great.
Awesome, yeah, I learned a lot.
I was a little nerve wracking getting so many people in the group together, but that actually worked out pretty good.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of good aspects came up, so.
They're all different.
Yeah.
Sides of it. Excellent.
Cool, alright, so what do you got for us, Debbie?
So, um, as you know, I presented you guys with that proposal to, um, lower their supply cost of the, um, the electric bill, cause we use a bazillion kilowatt hours, and, um, so the rate that we got last week, was it last week? Yeah, the rate that we got last week is now expired, and it has gone, so the longer we wait, last week it was point one two five seven seven, today it's point one three eight seven seven. Um, they said they predict it to keep going up. Um, so, time is of the essence, if you would like to partake in this.
I'm not very familiar in how all this works, um, who presented this last week initially?
So.
Just Debbie, she's been in contact.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, with this guy, and, um, his company, basically, you send him your electric bill and they give the homeowners to, to lower, you know, not, not, it's not just commercial, but it residential also, um, and you give them your electric bill, they put out how many kilowatt hours you use, and to all these suppliers, and then they come back with the lowest, whoever the lowest bidder is, in this case, it was, um, NG is the name of the company, um, and so everyone has, you know, different rates for their supplying the electricity. And, um, so, they were the low, the low bidders.
Now, is anybody of, on the board or in the room familiar with these types of programs? Cause I stayed away from them myself, I just
I have to.
let it be how it is with the power company, cause I don't quite understand.
Me too.
Yeah, at all.
Yeah, well, I know Jim Cawthie did, he, he locked in a rate, he's at like eight cents, cause he locked it in long before all the ESOs went crazy stuff.
Yeah. Lou, any familiarity with the, no, Jay, Sin?
Well, I have the opposite story of, I know people who have locked in or signed on to something, and then
Right.
three months later, they're paying six times what I'm paying.
Right.
This guy is guaranteeing my hesitation is, um, who uses as a provider.
Rate, yeah. It's that NG.
It's NG.
NG is a supplier.
They're, I believe, one of the largest energy suppliers in the world.
Okay.
They're global, they're throughout ev- every continent, and this little country boy gets nervous when he sees that kinda stuff.
Okay.
So, that's just a gut feeling on my part, because so many of these companies are, well, you look at like Blackrock investment, and they, they're turning to this ESG, and I, I don't know how it could possibly be affected on our electric bill, but there is a, um, in my mind, kind of a risk of that.
I'm not, so what would be the bad thing about doing this?
NG?
About, about doing this in general, like, other than saving and safeguarding.
Well, partnering up with a, with a global energy supplier is, I don't know what that would be like.
How long do they guarantee?
Uh, you can do one year, two year, or three years. Somebody using a tape recorder?
It sounds like somebody playing with a mine curse.
Not the mail machine, is it?
No, I thought it was a tape recorder, anyway.
And our, and our electric bill still comes from EverSource.
The electric bill still comes from EverSource, it's just the supplier line would be fifty grand less over the course of three years. Well, now, it's a little bit less than that. Because the rate has gone up. And we have a window, um, if we want it to take effect in March, like we basically kinda, we decided I think he said by next week, it'd be very, very late, but by next week, the rate will go up again, and they, they're predicting by May, it'll be at like sixteen cents.
Now. Now, on this last page, there's, um, three different, um, annual subscription fees?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's.
Oh, there's a one time, or two annual subscriptions?
That's nothing to do with us, that's them.
Oh, that's not, alright.
Yeah, I asked about that, I was like, wait, what is this? But that's not, we don't pay that. That's to do with them. I don't know why he included it again, cause the first one didn't have it. The first one had it, I asked him about it, and we, we sent it without it, but then it's here again, but he said that has nothing to do with us, cause I asked him like, we're gonna pay per account, that's ridiculous.
Yeah, there's eight accounts on them.
I think, yeah, well, there's two of them.
What?
There's, there's two different contracts, because we have so many accounts.
Oh.
Two, four, six, eight. Two, four, six. Yeah. So we have fourteen accounts total. And I get a double check and make sure they're all on there.
Yeah.
Cause there might be more than that. But. So, and then February first, EverSource rates are going up again too.
Actually, um, electrical costs.
I mean, March first.
Um, is going up, going down half a cent, but other charges are going up about three cents.
Right, yeah.
What's EverSource, just for comparison, their supply?
Twenty two and a half, but it's going up three cents.
Twenty two and a half. No, it's going.
The supply?
The supply, the supply is going down to twenty two.
To twenty two, yeah, from twenty two and a half.
But the delivery charge, the, is going up half a cent.
Yeah, and then something else.
Uh, the, the other one about, um.
Three cents or something.
There's another, yeah, that, it goes up around three cents or so, three and a half cents.
Yeah. Yeah. So.
Basically, that also still.
Or recovery charge.
Yes. No, that's not bad. So basically, when he did the, he did a, um, like a breakdown, a comparison of, of this rate, if we did, you know, the thirty six months versus EverSource, it would save, um, over fifty thousand over the course of three years, and I like that those. Which, nothing to sneeze at.
Peter, what do you think about all this?
Just all started that when I worked at Shady Plankton. And all, cause they were suing the power company because of the rates and stuff, and they weren't caught.
Cause they had a monopoly.
Yep.
Yep. So then that's when they always sat around suppliers.
If it's guaranteed for three years, probably be worth it, but, you know, if it's gonna go up three or four months down the road, probably not.
Right. No, this is guaranteed, yeah, this price is guaranteed for three years, it will not go up.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Or not.
Except.
Except.
I do have a question.
Some of these.
Sue.
If, if we find that, that it's not a stable supply, can we quit before the three years? You know, if there's some issue with that.
There's a cancellation charge that's very contradictory.
Yeah. Yeah, I saw that.
There is.
There's, the stability, I don't see how that really comes into play, because it's coming across EverSource's
Yeah.
delivery.
Yeah, but I, if there was some other issue, I guess, but you, here is a cancellation.
Well, that's, yeah, that would be a problem between EverSource and them.
So if we do terminate early, then, customer will be charged an early termination fee equal to the contract price, less the current market price. Current market price is wholesale price of energy as determined by NG in a commercial, commercially reasonable manner.
Yeah, I like those words.
Yeah, basically, basically what it means is if we went through two years of our contract and we s- we wanted to cancel and didn't do the third year, we would have to pay the difference of that third year between EverSource and NG.
But, but the rest is.
Is that how you read that?
Yeah, I asked him about it.
I, I think the one thing that you have to look at is like, with everything else during inflationary times, um, prices go up, but they, when the inflation is over, they never come down as far as they were before.
Hmm. Right.
Not always.
Oh, name one.
Gas. Bean oil.
I haven't seen, I haven't seen two bucks.
Gas, oil, milk, eggs. Three years ago, I was paying a buck a gallon for milk.
Bean.
No, it's five bucks.
I was paying eighty nine cents a dozen for eggs, I was paying under two dollars a gallon for gas. Uh, fi- six years ago, I was paying close to what I am today, so it went down.
Yeah.
So, there are things that go down.
Yeah, utilities, brands.
I haven't seen my utilities go down in my life.
Util, utilities is a different market than food, food or gas.
Yeah. I understood the, um, the increasing, ever increasing rates, I understand that, but at the same time, I, I don't feel compelled to move on this right now, I just don't have enough experience with this, and I know, like for my own home, I've stayed away from any types of these agreements, cause I felt like I'd heard some negative aspects to it, um, now have you already had this double checked or required?
No, Jason said not to, until everybody went down.
Okay.
Well, yeah, I didn't wanna send it to the attorney until we reviewed it, because.
No. I was thinking more, uh, with your peer group.
Oh, no.
Just to see what their input may be, cause they may have some, um, experiences that they can share with us.
Okay. Yeah.
So it's not a, a rock solid guarantee, there's a few, um, like, and I would have read this before, I didn't know we were meeting today, I thought it was just delivered in a timber harvest, so, I would have read this, I'm trying to read it now. There's a change in law, administrative regulation, tariff or any fees or costs imposed by the applicable ISO or government authority or change in blah, blah, blah.
So I think that the highest value would be to, um, pull your, you know, your peers just to see, cause they've seemed to, you know, guide us in in how long?
What?
Were you driving me?
No. Jen, Jen was doing side, Jen was doing side language.
Uh, to pull your peers and just, you know, get some guidance and some input from them, um.
Yeah. Yep.
She doesn't really know how to pull by the doing it.
Yeah, the other thing is.
Yeah.
The other thing that you may wanna look at, you, you were talking about your, your fluctuating prices, is that you have to look at what the average is going to be over, um, the full, like, full term of the, of the contract.
Who wants to try to predict that?
That's right. And, you know, let's say that for a year, you got this price, and then, you know, EverSource drops that price down to half a penny less for six months, and then raises it again, or, yeah, cause they're working in a fluctuating market. And, um, uh, at the end of that three years, did you save any money or not?
Yeah, and that's, that's one, one question, the other question is, I don't know, I'll say it again, global company.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But how does that?
They operate by different parameters.
Well, that's true, that's a global company, but you've got a contract with, not with that global company.
Everything in here is referring to NG, they set everything, terms.
Alright, it's not NG that you're, you're dealing with.
I believe.
There's a layer in between, uh, you and NG, and it's whoever is.
They're kind of the broker.
I was just gonna say, yeah.
The contract is, the contract would be with.
The small guy.
Yeah. So if they, if they raise, if NG raises it, that doesn't necessarily mean that you, you've got a contract, you're, you're.
Right, yeah, we, we are locked into that rate for three years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright, well, I gotta do some inquiry myself over the next week, um, you know, read through this a little bit more and
But. Okay.
Like I asked, if you could just throw it out to your group and.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Um, and if you can have them, if any of them feel so compelled that it's a great thing or a bad thing.
Either way.
Just have them shoot off an email with that, like testimonial, um, so they can read that directly.
Yep. Yep. Yep, I agree, I'm gonna do it with my house, I'll let you know how it works out.
Oh, gee, there you go.
Are you doing your, with your house for the same company, same broker?
I, the broker, yeah, I don't know if it's gonna be the same.
Okay.
I don't use, you know, eight bazillion.
Let me know who you go with, cause I'm, I'm thinking about doing it also.
Okay.
So you are considering, yeah.
Yeah, I am.
Alright, okay.
Yeah, I, I don't know that, I only use an average probably about three hundred and fifty kilowatt hours a month. So, my goals typically, you know, I haven't seen it over a hundred dollars in probably four or five years.
I'm moving to your house.
Until, um, it's dark.
He doesn't use heat or electricity, he has candles.
It, it, it's one of those things that, um, well, yeah, the house is well insulated, I've got a wood stove to offset the fuel well, and, um, I went in with LED bulbs when they first came out, I paid a lot of money for them back then, but, you know, my, um, my electric bill was typically between fifty and seventy dollars. And now with this, um, uh, with this has gone up to a hundred and twelve or so, a hundred and ten was this last month.
Every bulb in my house is LED, and my electric bill is like six hundred bucks. And I keep my heat on sixty four.
What else, hey, do you have electric heat?
Oh, jeez.
No, I keep my, I, my upstairs on sixty four, my main floor on sixty eight.
See, I, I have to keep the house at, at least sixty seven, because of, uh, audio.
At that point, it might be better just to run but, off a generator.
That's what I'm thinking. I'm gonna have to buy one of those.
Other than the first of diesel has gone up or.
Not that much.
Um, no, propane, I wanna automatic on propane generator.
Or propane. Propane, yeah.
I agree in agreement.
Anyways.
Yeah.
With, what you said, kinda, kinda tabled.
Yeah.
Get some of the opinions.
Yeah.
Unrelated issue, has there been any LED lights replaced?
So this room had already been done, the other ones are eight footers and you can't get the plug in place, so we have to, I said that at, at another meeting a while ago.
It may have been when I was gone.
Um, maybe you weren't there, no, I wasn't that close ago, it was a while ago.
Uh, I was sick and, and whatever.
Oh, right, right, yeah, okay, anyways, yeah, so the plug and place, you can't do, uh, eight footers, and most of those bulbs are eight footers, so you have to replace the whole
Structure.
valise and the structure and all that, so.
What about the other rooms?
Um, they're mostly eight, oh, inside the rooms.
Some of them are eight, some of them four.
Yeah, some are eight, some are four.
So there hasn't been any new bulbs put in?
No. These are all LED in here. But this room's already been done.
Do you wanna pick a room? I think that's where, where we kinda ended up there, trying to understand.
Well, we said pick this room, but this room's already been done, so.
Yeah, so after that happened.
We need to move on, it just. We need to move on. It just.
trying to remember that meeting, like you mustn't have been here because there was no we were looking, you know, for your input on that.
Yeah.
Oh.
And Maryland, Maryland's got a couple of LED lights and I think the town clerk's got a couple of LED lights.
Well, I just.
Yeah. Yeah.
So this, other than this is the only one with a hundred percent LED.
But when you when you're still using the the ballast?
You gotta bypass the ballast with the plug and play.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
With the plug and play. But if you're still gonna use the ballast,
No, you don't. No, with LEDs.
does it? What is it, the starter or something? Because you say whatever it is, you're still using the same amount of electricity even if you have an LED bulb because it's
It's running.
it's running. It still has to go through that.
Yep.
So it's not s- it's not the bulb, it's the.
It's not the bulb.
It's the ballast.
Well, yes, and yeah, it's better than a ballast.
Yes, whatever, yeah. Yeah. So you're not saving any money by switching to bulbs.
You know, the thing we were looking at before by replacing them, each room would have a photo cell, so when you walk in, they would come on, soon you leave, it would go off. That's where the biggest savings would be. You wouldn't have to worry about shutting the switches off. Same thing down the garage.
But you can do that with a switch.
You can, but I come in at five in the morning and usually lights on at town office here. So you're not saving nothing if the lights are on all night.
Do it, yeah. So replacing the switches would probably not cost ninety thousand like replacing the bulbs.
Wow, no, but he still he still got all fixtures on.
You don't leave the door open, motion detector switch is not gonna work.
What's that?
Says if you leave the door open like this, your motion detector switch is not gonna work.
That's right.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I'm sure you can mount it a different way for this room specifically. There's always a solution to any issues.
I mean, if that was the thing, because because to replace every bulb with a smart bulb was it was expensive and the payoff was
No, but.
a long time and we were looking over decades.
Seven years. It was seven years and then the electric electric rates went up, so it would be less than that.
Possibly. Yeah.
So see, I'm just saying, just down the garage alone, we had almost two over two hundred lights.
Yeah.
You have one?
Almost two hundred light bulbs down the garage we gotta replace.
Well, shouldn't you just take out every other bulb?
Yeah. Why don't you come down and put the power down there? You don't have to worry about each other. You can do whatever you want after August thirty first.
You know what I'm saying?
No, I'm just saying, you're talking pretty good chunk of change down there.
Mm-hmm, even just to.
Just to replace them.
Yeah. All right, yeah, so there's been no forward movement on LED lights since our last discussion?
No forward movement on LED lights, no forward movement on cheaper electricity.
That's what I'm saying. We talk about it and we have options and then we decide not to do anything about it.
What I would do is replace everything up here with these lights, with the fixtures. And move that switch so it has a automatic on and off. I have it in my office and I have it in my lunchroom down in the bathroom with the light. And I leave, lights on soon as after five minutes, light shut off till we come back.
Yeah.
And that's fairly cheap.
So you're saying replace all these fixtures?
Replace all these fixtures.
Because all of these run through the ballast still?
No, these are all new. We took the old lights down, they're all new fixtures and everything.
No. Yeah. Okay. So why would we replace these fixtures?
Because I had trouble with the pal- you know, ballasts and stuff. It was easy to at the time was like, oh.
No, I mean, did you say replace these fixtures?
No, I said replace all the other office with these.
Oh, with those, okay, all right, yeah, I see, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
These LED fixtures.
So you're not buying just a bulb and plug and play, you're buying the whole fixture.
Yes.
Yeah.
Then you got all new plastic shades, all new.
Because then you're not paying an electrician to bypass all the ballast and all that.
Yeah, and these seem to lasted.
Oh, they've been four or five years, I think, since I put them in.
Yeah, no problems.
Yeah. The only problem is too bright for some people.
They are, they are quite sharp.
Yeah, really bright.
Okay. All right, so let's go to look into buying our own fixtures.
We got these from Milton.
Milton, it was an electric supply?
Electric, yeah.
Yeah.
That way I figured that would something happened, we have an outlet to get them.
Yeah. Okay, all right.
So I guess we'll get a co- a price on those.
Mm-hmm.
See how much that's gonna cost?
Well, like the hallway, I don't think you need as many lights on the hallways to get up there.
No. No.
So we'd save some and probably your office shouldn't need as many lights.
No. I only turn half of mine on anyway, if I even turn them on.
Yeah, I know, but I'm just saying. Some of these rooms you might not need.
Yeah.
The number of lights are in there, so it's safe.
Who likes candles?
Yeah.
But at the same time.
I'll put my cordless on, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I feel like, you know, down at the garage would benefit the most and the fire department would benefit the most from this.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
So would it be worth starting in a section down at the garage or over at the fire department instead of playing around up here?
Well, your biggest bill is sitting up on a roof anyway, so what little bit you do for lights, you're not gonna save that much.
Right.
Yeah.
Because of what's up there.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so as far as, you know, light quality is concerned, I know the fire department's kinda dimish.
Yep.
Uh, we could probably brighten that up down there with the LED.
Yep.
Yeah, I was thinking maybe down there, I have to back, I just bought a light from some shit. So just figure rounds LED with a photo cell in it.
Yeah.
Drive up there, that lights that dome right up, almost like daylight at nighttime.
Well, yeah, I I've seen those, yeah.
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 And that cost me less than two hundred bucks.
Yeah, sorry.
So I might not need as many in the garage. Give us some bright lights, we'll save a lot of money.
Well, do that instead of they.
Yeah, instead of changing all the bulbs.
Yeah.
Huh, all right.
That's a thought.
Yeah.
That happens.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know, put some in the green center too. That long bay in there help.
That thing's like daylight with the skylights in it.
Well, that make skylights make a big difference out there.
Yeah, they that's what the girls have said. They're like, you don't even need lights in that room.
Yeah. No.
Yeah.
All right. Cool, yeah, so look for those numbers too.
Yes.
Um.
And Thursday, he's getting uh power up, it's coming down to get generator pricing.
Awesome. All right. Excellent, yeah, so we'll put that on the agenda for next Tuesday, um and kind of go over the after action notes for the board next Tuesday as well.
Okay.
Hope you're not looking at lists of things.
No.
Yeah, try to wrap this up right now unless you guys have anything pressing.
Yeah.
It's fine. No, I have it.
Lou?
No.
Okay, Sue? Good?
No, I just come to see what I found.
All right. Cool, uh, so we'll adjourn this meeting now and then come back. Um, we'll reconvene at seven at Messina High School. Uh, make a motion to adjourn.
Second second it?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we'll see you guys at Messina at seven.
He gets the second.
He's he started to say it first, so.
Okay.
I'll just finish the question.
So you guys can read his number?
I don't have his phone number, but I have his email.
I got it.
Um, I was gonna see, and Phil has it, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why I was gonna say Phil probably did.
Yeah. So you're gonna um
I'm trying to find that.
Are you gonna work on that?
Yep.
Actually use.
Going to contact Kenny or?
I'm not seeing.
I like her about that property.
Trying to find what?
No, I know, but to get a machine down there, you could probably get a machine for nothing.
I'm using electricity and I'm not seeing.
You sure?
Yeah. I want something that I know.
Okay, all right.
I don't wanna owe Kenny nothing down the road.
All right.
Wow, I should say, like towns don't wanna owe Kenny nothing.
That's true. I know, better to stay out of that quid pro quo crap, but at the same time, we're all one community and, you know.
That's right.
Yes.
Yeah. That's right.
Right.
All right, see you at seven.
See you at seven.
Thanks, Peter.
You're lucky and I'm unlucky. I'm hoping I'll be lucky. It's snowing now, so we can't go to the.
We.
What time is it supposed to start?
Seven, eight o'clock.
Oh, nice.
Yep.
Yeah, I got a nice warning today. Icy conditions, could be slippery.
Yeah.
So just drive up there with the sander. Got the salt truck.
Yeah.
And I'll follow you to back to my house.
No, I'll say you gotta stay there until morning to get the road safe for you, so you gotta stay at school.
So not slip sliding away. Yeah. That'd be good.
All right, see you at seven.
See you, Peter.
Bye, thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that's.
A jet filter?
Yeah.
I don't know.
That the ballast makes you pay.
It's something that.
The ballast has a shelf like, that's the only downside I see on them.
And ballasts are more expensive than the fixture. When I used to sell that Ace Hardback, it was ridiculous.
Right, right, which 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 my um my answer to that would be when the ballast fail, then you replace the fixture.
Right.
But it makes me wonder if half the lights in this office are already LED, what was that? Companies, they were going on the assumption everything was fluorescent, so the savings would be less unless they analyzed it and said, oh.
Um. Yeah, they could, yeah, because they looked at the type of picture also supposedly.
Another freaking clean out.
What's that?
Have to do another clean out. I stopped taking look my backpack so I could like.
I don't know how you get that thing to be so fat.
Uh, microphones are still on.
Yeah, that's the latest in the saga.
Ashoreland.
Oh, yeah, I I guess I know.
Two seven.
That's today.
You're requesting time off today?
No. Today's date.
All right.
August nineteenth, wow, talk about notice.
Uh, you know.
You think with this kind of notice, you'll be able to leave your laptop at home?
I will, I am leaving my laptop at home for that one.
Should actually unplug this weekend.
I did, I unplugged this weekend. I was very proud of myself.
How did, did everything fall apart?
I imagine it didn't.
Well, I mean, you know, because it's Tuesday.
I know. I know.
And another one in March.
Yeah, like Saturday, we just stayed in our jockeys all day. Didn't go out. Didn't clean, barely cooked.
Oh.
What?
Oh, so this is the the straightened out slips for Messina, like both of them?
Yeah, yeah, there's two there, one for January, one for February. So she said, I know they look the same, but they're different.
Yeah.
Anything else I need to do?
Yep. Gonna sign this sucker.
Sign, sign, sign every time.
Oh, I might take a nap.
I gotta take a dog.
Hey, on that AI thing, I saw a video. I don't know if it's true, I haven't verified it yet.
Gil loves Jordan Peterson.
Oh, I do.
I showed it to him. He's like, yeah, I've already seen that. It's disturbing, isn't it? I'm like, all right, yeah, because Jason.
Yeah, it's good. But I saw another one and the guy said in, I don't know, was it twenty twenty? They had two AIs. They stuck them, they hooked them up to each other and they said within an hour or two,
They were talking.
they were talking to each other in a language that
No one understood.
nobody can understand.
Yeah.
They had invented their own language
Yep.
within a matter of hours that nobody could understand what it was.
Yeah, Gil told me about that.
Hi, no meeting.
Huh?
No meeting.
We're not meeting.
We're talking about AI coming down at us.
Scary. It's still on too.
Yeah. Yep.
So, yeah, pretty interesting stuff.
Yeah, they have.
I think all the experts say, they say the next two years, we're gonna be looking at a different landscape.
Yes, AI, it scares me.
Yeah, they do. They say it's.
Probably literally anticipate it.
Yeah, they're probably starting making that up.
Did you sign these green ones?
Don't put your pen away, you've got.
I still have to sign them ones?
Yeah.
Nuh-uh.
Yeah, uh.
Nuh-uh, I gotta go home and eat some supper before the meeting. What do we have here?
Um, Jennifer, Christmas gift for you guys.
And that's very special.
Wait, a Christmas gift?
Yeah.
What is this?
Oh, you didn't sign this.
She's stuck it to her super boss.
Missed the minutes.
Is it February?
Yeah. She's had them in her office for clearly a couple of months.
Okay. I like it.
So I'm guessing I gotta take these to the.
Yeah, do you have some made up for girl and Mitch and Luke?
Nope. Nope. I'll kill myself. Oh, I could take mine and I guess.
How come you don't have it?
I do. It's on my desk.
Sure.
Should I put it in? I don't know.
Well, then people can know who you are. You know, all them ten people that watch our.
Yeah.
Video.
Oh, he needs to sign.
I need to sign something. I've signed about forty places. Still not enough.
No. It's never enough, Jason. It's never enough.
These guys agree. You guys agree with this? You could assign, you missed one.
Oh.
You missed one?
Lou, you missed one.
Huh? I just see the sign here.
Pull the tape.
Last load of order. Oh, boy.
Okay.
Did any reps respond or? The meeting in March, any reps to what?
Oh, I haven't even sent that out yet. I've been too focused on the deliberative session and the audit.
The audit?
The au- still working on the twenty twenty one audit. You have no idea the amount of information they need. It's crazy.
Sean, are you coming?
I'm gonna get him and let the dog out.
Oh.
Sean, text me.
Oh. At.
At four o'clock.
Yeah.
After I sat down and buzzed.
Did you forget this?
This meeting? Is that mine? That is mine. Merry Christmas. He's in there. Hey, Merry Christmas to you too.
Hey, you gotta wait for the number.
Thank you.